I'm ready.
Are you ready? I'd like to call to order, please, the work session on Monday, October 27th. And just as a reminder to all of you, the regular meeting will start right at 6:00 because we have a number of public hearings. So as I look around the table, we're missing one councilman, and so Bill Stip will not be attending the work session. We have two items tonight. The first item on the agenda is discuss benefits and cost of conducting mid-decade special census. Katie, welcome to present. Katie?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We wanted to touch base with you and give you an update on conducting a special census before we asked you to take any action on the item. For the benefit of the public, I just want to quickly go over that. We receive state shared revenues, and those are distributed based on population. And according to state statute, they're distributed based on a population as determined by the census. However, we are able to update those figures at the mid-decade census. Now, in years past, in 1995 and 2005, Maricopa County did that altogether. However, we haven't been growing steadily, or I should say evenly, throughout the county. Some communities, such as Goodyear and Gilbert, have been growing much faster than other communities. Because of that, there wasn't support countywide to do a special census mid-decade update altogether. So now it's up to individual communities to decide whether they want to spend the funds to conduct a special census or not. And that's what we're discussing here tonight, whether we should move forward with that. In 2010, our population count was 65,000 to 75. We just received the draft population estimate for July 1st, 2014, which is 74,00678. That has not been approved by MAG regional council yet. So estimating over 9,000 residents have come to Goodyear since 2010. We also see several other factors that indicate we've been growing very fast. Foreclosures have significantly decreased. You'll remember in 2010, we had a much higher-than-normal vacancy rate. It was, I think it was 14%, and normally, it's more like 8% or 5%. And we've also seen this, we've been able to verify through the utility bill accounts that this population has increased. So we're not just relying on building permits, we are looking at other factors to make sure that our population has been increasing. We received a cost estimate from the U.S. Census Bureau, and it is $1.3 million to conduct a special census. Those of you who were part of this in 2005 may be scratching your head and saying, "That's significantly higher." It was only $115,000 in 2005.
Congratulations.
This is mostly due to the fact that the census has changed how they do it. In 2005, we conducted a survey. So we mailed surveys to just a small portion of the population, and that's how they determine the count. The census does not offer that anymore. Now, they actually go door-to-door, knocking on every single door in a community, and asking and verifying. They don't mail anything out with a special census anymore. So that, combined with the fact that we're not doing it altogether as a region, has caused the cost to significantly increase. Now, the good news is, $525,000 of that would be paid to the census at the time we would, in order to conduct a special census, we have to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the U.S. Census Bureau. And when we would execute that MOU, we would pay them $525,000. We would retain the $800,000, and that would be used to pay local workers. So 800,000 of that $1.3 million will be going back into our local economy through paying temporary jobs. There have been funds identified in the asset management fund, and Finance Director Larry Lang would be available for more specific questions.
Is that the replacement fund? All right, I want to make sure I get this correct. We expect about $3 million cash in that fund, because we had five in there, correct?
That's correct. We have five in that fund. This would be coming out of there. We're actually expecting that we'll spend 500,000 or less of that fund between now and the end of the year for other things. This will be replenished by the state shared revenues after the new numbers come in.
I'm just thinking of timing here, I realize that, but we've got $2 million roughly coming from a project that was just approved last week out of that fund, timing-wise, because that was the backstop as a result of those projects out in later years. Now, the revenue sharing's not going to hit right away, that comes after the census win. When do you actually expect that cash?
This cash, this million three in cash, for my cash flow purposes, I'm assuming will be this fiscal year.
Okay.
What I'm looking at is the asset management, the various plans. By the end of this fiscal year, we'll have a pretty good idea on the various plans, but I do not expect much of the money going for replacement to start until fiscal year 16.
Okay, my only concern is I tally a little over 3, and I'm just thinking of the timing. 1.8 plus 1.3, we were looking at 3 million total, you know, from a cash backstop that would be replaced.
Right.
It just made me feel better that that's not going to be an issue.
It is not going to be an issue.
The other thing I want to point out is, we should note that the project will require some staff assistance, so there also are some soft costs. When we did the 2010 decennial census, they required us to verify the addresses and go through some paperwork like that. So GIS staff and planning staff worked a lot with that. And then, of course, our communications team helped a lot with the marketing to our citizens about the plan. So there will also be some staff help required. The benefits is that we estimate that we could receive anywhere between $7 million and $11 million over the five-year period.
Could you just repeat that once more for the people listening?
Our $1.3 million investment could get us $7 million to $11 million over the five-year period. That $7 million is a very conservative estimate. MAG created this, they used the 2013 state shared revenues, because that was all that was available. But those state shared revenues have been going up in the last few years, so we would expect those would continue to go up. The other thing to consider is that when MAG created those estimates, they did it based on everybody updating their population figures. It looks like only a handful of communities are looking to update our figures, so that means we'd have kind of a bigger slice of the pie for over the next five years. So...
So we're saying that then, out of 1,330,464, we're going to recoup between $7 million and $11 million.
Yes.
So take that out of that, and we're still doing quite well.
Mayor.
Sherry?
And I just want to clarify what you're saying, so that people are really clear on this and everyone listening. So when we update our figures, if we're one of the handful of communities that actually update them, we'll get this larger slice, and everyone else is still basically stagnant at their 2010 numbers. So our higher numbers will be when they're figuring out against their lower numbers.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Loretano, that's correct. Everyone who doesn't update will continue to use their 2010 numbers, while we'd be using 2015 numbers.
So if we didn't do this, then we'd be stuck with our 2010 numbers, and the cities then that did it would get the higher amounts.
That's correct.
Joanne?
Just a couple of questions. So first of all, when you said we could be using some of our local people, will we be the ones going out to hire these people to do this, so we know that they are Goodyear residents? Or is it going to, you're just giving that as a possibility?
Thank you, Councilmember Osborne. We wouldn't be the ones doing the hiring. Our local field office is Denver, they would be doing the hiring. They wouldn't guarantee that they're Goodyear residents, but they like to have people in the neighborhood. So they like to hire someone from historic Goodyear to knock on doors in historic Goodyear.
From what I remember from the last time, because I remember I knew some people that got called, that they called the people in Goodyear, and if they're available and will do it, then they got the job. But if there's not enough, then they have to go outside the city.
Right. So there could be people from, you know, Avondale and Litchfield Park. It would be extremely unlikely that somebody from Chandler would be working in Goodyear all the way across the valley.
Because Gilbert's probably going to do this, so Gilbert's going to be busy getting those people for theirs.
Yeah. So no, it's not guaranteed, but it's highly likely that they would be Goodyear residents.
Okay, and so you said that they'd be doing door-to-door. We would not have any mail this time, right? Or is it a combo?
There wouldn't be a mail of the survey, but I don't know exactly. The census may be, you know, last time in 2010, they mailed a lot of information saying it's coming.
Right.
They may be mailing some information like that, but the survey would not be mail.
I'm just wondering the success rate now compared to mail-ins to door-to-door these days, how, you know, good that is. And one last, so just hypothetical scenario, okay? So we do all this, and, you know, obviously financially it looks like it makes sense and everything. And this is a, we don't know until it occurs, but what's the chance of what our state has foreseeing their future, of how this could affect us, going to all this trouble, and then somehow, they try to, you know, sweep some of the funds?
Sweep our funds?
Yeah. I'm just looking hypotheticals out there, you know, how could this be a real issue? We go to all this trouble and all this and think that this is going to be a good payoff. What's the possibilities of that?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Osborne, we do have a letter from the Department of Revenue saying that they will accept the numbers.
Okay.
And it is in state statute clearly that they will accept the numbers. And with several communities looking at it, I think that's unlikely. I think the more, the larger question of what is the future of state shared revenues, I certainly couldn't answer that, and I would look to our city manager.
Nobody can answer that.
That is, that is the risk, I would say.
Right.
I think we are likely to recoup the cost, but...
So more than likely, that's really the only risk out there, would be that?
Yes. I even looked at scenarios.
Okay.
Larry?
We'll talk about the state shared revenue. The risk that you're really talking about is that the state would try to reduce the size of the pie that they distribute to the various cities. If we do this, our proportionate share of that pie gets larger than it otherwise would be anyway. So unless they completely get rid of state shared revenues, which I don't think that's the risk anyone's talking about, unless they completely did, it still would have an impact.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Larry, that was reassuring. Joe?
Based on the calculation, almost seems to me that those that don't do this run the risk that their actual allocation may drop. Because if ours is becoming a larger percentage, and we're looking to gain 7, $11 million over, and the money is growing at 3% or 4%, whatever that number happens to be, there's got to be losers in this deal, and that's probably going to be the ones that don't take the time to do this study. Is that a fair assumption?
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Pizzillo, that's absolutely correct. And if you look at the information, this was an attachment to the staff report, these are just the communities in Maricopa County, MAG member agencies. You can see, if everybody updated their numbers, yes, there would be people who losing revenues. But if Goodyear and other communities who conduct a special census are increasing their revenues, that money has to come from somewhere.
But some of them aren't quite as high as our change is.
No, no. And because only a few communities would be updating their numbers, the effect on the other communities wouldn't be as significant as this document that was created by MAG, but there would be some type of drop. We have no way to estimate what that would be, because we don't know who's participating yet, but that's a fair...
So really, if I'm reading this right, Joe, it looks like me, like Buckeye and Gilbert and Queen Creek. Those are the biggies. Is that right, am I reading this chart correctly?
Yes.
They've had the biggest increase in population.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And we have heard that Gilbert has already executed their MOU. Buckeye received direction from council last week to move forward with executing an MOU. And we've heard there are still, Queen Creek, Maricopa, some other cities are still in the works.
So I guess on the others, the decision is, is if they go it, they're going to pay X amount of dollars. Their loss may be not as great, but it doesn't cover their costs, so... But again, the pie's only so much, so if we're getting 711 and some others are getting several millions, then there will be winners and losers in this. And I don't have a problem with us being the winner, put it to you that way.
Wally?
My question's, Katie, is, I have three. I know the Department of Revenue has already said they'll accept our numbers. How long is it going to take to do this survey? If we start it in this year, will we have a definitive number that we will be working with in the next budget session?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Campbell, we don't know exactly, we're still working with the Census Bureau, and they're not exactly sure how long it's going to take, because they don't know the scope of this project, how many communities are going to be participating. They do do it kind of on a first-come, first-served basis, and so we've been getting a lot of information from Gilbert. And they've already been working that they think they're going to be conducting their census in the fall of 2015. It probably takes a month. And the Census Bureau, the Department of Revenue told us they'd like to have the numbers by March 2016. And so Denver has already told us that they're going to work with us, we're going to try and work this out to make sure that we meet the deadline we need to with the Department of Revenue. They actually don't have a hard deadline that's in state statute or anything about when you have to get the numbers. That was just a request to get it by March 2016. So we don't have those hard timelines yet. We'll still try and get that information for you and work with the Census and Department of Revenue to get that.
Okay. Can the census run more than one census at a time? Can they do Chandler and us and Buckeye? Or is it, they do Chandler, just hypothetically? Maybe we'll be first, I don't know, who knows? Whoever comes in first, do they do just that? Or can they run it with all of us at once, so that we all come in together?
They can, they have the ability to do that. Again, I think it will depend on the scope. To me, it makes sense that we would all do it together, so that we can combine marketing efforts, be working together with the other communities doing this. They told us it comes on a first-come, first-served, so we don't fully know what that means.
Well, if we do share, perhaps our cost might even be a little bit less on some of the things, but we don't know.
Maybe.
We don't know.
So where are we in that chain? If we, okay, this time?
Becoming first.
Are we first or second?
Are we second in that chain?
A third.
Buckeye already made their thing. Gilbert's the only one I know who's actually executed their MOU.
Okay.
In Arizona.
Okay. So we're still in the running.
That's it, thank you.
Joe?
No, I return on investment, you can't beat it, so...
Yeah, and I do want to add, if you don't mind, one point to Vice Mayor Pizzillo's statement that there's winners and losers. I do think it's fair to point out, though, that what updating our numbers does is ensure that all residents get their fair share.
Right.
Because we've grown so much, right now, our residents are not getting their fair share. Because if you look at how many dollars per residence we have compared to other communities, ours are almost short-changed. So what I see this as is evening the field, and it gives our residents the fair share that they deserve. That's why the state statute allows us to update our numbers, because so many communities in Arizona are always growing so fast.
Basically, what you're saying, there isn't winners and losers, that's the cities that should be granted that amount, so I guess...
But when I was thinking of terms, I wasn't thinking of the citizens, what I was thinking of is the dollars. There's some whose revenue sharing is going to go down, and some that are going to go up. That's what I was thinking in terms of, not the citizens, but the actual dollars those cities will get.
But that would eventually, anyway, because that's what the census is built on, and that's what the revenue sharing is built on, so...
No, but the point I was trying to make is, if the pie is this, and some of us are getting increases, then it's got to come from another jurisdiction, that's all.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Getting a little more whipped cream this time.
Yeah, pretty much.
Mayor, I really like the idea of going door-to-door, because then we can verify that they actually are our residents and who they are, because not everybody mails things back. So, and I don't know that everybody in our city received a survey. Did they? Do you know?
Every address should have received a survey, but...
Whether they returned it back or not, yeah, okay, yeah.
That's why we sent people into the field.
Oh, I think it's a good idea to put them in the field.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Okay, so if we get the okay tonight, we will bring an MOU back to you for your November 17th meeting to take action on. In the meantime, we can continue to do research on any outstanding questions you have. Again, if we conduct the MOU, roughly, we're thinking the census would take place in the fall of 2015. We would get the numbers back maybe spring, summer of 2016, in time to update our numbers for the fiscal year 16, 17, budget year.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Did you say, when did you say the actual census would be occurring? Would they be out in the field?
We think it'll be fall 2015, but we don't have that.
So when everybody's here?
Yes.
Everybody's back, okay.
And we talked about the summer, and they also don't want their field workers out in the summer.
No.
So they are right with us on not doing this in the summer.
Good. All right. Any other questions for Katie? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great news, great presentation. All right, let's go to the second item. It's an overview of the five-year revenue outlook for the general water, wastewater, and sanitation funds and tentative fiscal year 2015-16 budget process calendar. Lori Ringen-Roth? What, yes? I got the right name? Okay, Ringen-Roth, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, I was waiting for your smile on that one, make sure. She is our Budget and Research Manager.
All righty, thank you. First off, I'm happy to be here for the first time presenting with you, and I'm looking forward to working through the next budget process this year with you. It's going to be an exciting year.
Thank you, we are too.
So today, what I'm going to do is run through a five-year revenue-only forecast for the general fund and the major operating funds. And I want to remind you, this is very high-level and very summary. We haven't gotten down into the details of forecasting revenues at very low levels at this point in time.
I'm going to have to ask you to speak up just a little bit, please.
Okay, is this on?
Yep.
Okay, I'll get it closer to me?
Yes, thank you.
There. The, oops, which one? There. What we're going to cover then is, first, I'll give you some information on the budgeted revenue for this year to give you a sense of where we are, and then go over the history of the general fund for major general fund revenue categories, give you the forecast. We're going to talk about construction sales tax a little bit differently than we have in the past, because of some changes in state law. And then we'll go over the major enterprise fund forecast, and we'll close with the budget So this pie chart represents the general fund revenue. It does not include other resources like beginning fund balance, or the carryover, the contingency, or transfers from other funds. But if you look at this chart, you can see that sales, non-construction sales tax makes up almost half of the general fund revenue, so it's a very important element of our revenue stream. Another, about 25% is made up with the property tax and the state shared sales and income taxes that you were just hearing a little bit about. And then development-related revenues and kind of the one-time, more volatile construction sales tax makes up another 15%. This chart shows you a 10-year history of general fund revenues, excluding the one-time construction sales tax, so these are kind of the ongoing revenues that support our operations. And as you look at this, you'll see a pattern that you're going to see again and again through some of the charts we're going to show you, which is basically the high levels of growth early in the period, the dip of the recession, and then growing out of the recession. I would point out that in '07, on this chart, which is the third bar, there was a census impact of about $3.2 million. So in that year, because of the census, we received about $3.2 million more than we would have if there had not been a mid-decade census that year. There's also a census impact in '12 as well, from the regular, every 10-year census. If you look at the chart, you'll see that essentially fiscal year 13 was the first year we climbed back up to meet the peak of prior to the recession. And the last point I have to make on this chart is, you'll see as we've climbed out of the recession, we've had some good growth rates, as you would expect. But if you look closely at the last bar, you'll see that the rate of growth has slowed down. If you look at the step up from '12 to '13, and then the step from '13 to '14, we received about an $8 million increase in revenue in '13, and about a $4 million revenue increase in '14. So our growth rates are slowing at this point in time. Now, I'm going to walk you through a series of charts showing the 10-year history for the major revenue categories in the general fund. This chart is depicting the non-construction sales tax portion of our revenue. And again, this is about 50%. The dark bar on the bottom, or the dark blue bar on the bottom, represents the retail sales tax portion, and that is about 40, just under 40% of the total sales tax that we bring in. As you go up the chart, you'll see the restaurant and bars in the yellow, utility and communication in the green, real property in the dark, and then the other categories are in the last group there. One thing about this chart, and that makes it difficult to forecast sales tax, is that there were numerous rate changes and structure changes throughout this period. And so for us to go in and do a detailed look at historical experience to make our forecasts, which we will have to do later, we have to make a lot of adjustments to remove the effect of some of those changes. Ooh, I hit that hard, excuse me. Somebody else controlling it now? Does it move? Okay.
Is that the one you...
Will this one work?
Gremlins.
There. So state shared income tax is one of the revenues we receive from the state, again, the ones that are impacted by the census, shared based on population. So here, you can see that similar pattern we saw before. The one thing you'll note about the income tax is there is a two-year lag in the sharing of income tax. So you'll see the dip, the growth is a little more showing in the first years, and the dip happens a little bit later. There's also been legislative changes in this particular revenue stream over time, in terms of what the state did to deal with its budget problems. So it's kind of, but the pattern remains the same. State shared sales tax is, again, there's the pattern, you see it. You'll see in '07, a large jump, that's a census year, and you'll see in '12, a jump, that's another census year. And you'll notice that it took about five years to recover from the recession in our state shared revenues as well. This chart looks different than the others, and that's because it's our primary property tax. And again, this is about 10% of our general fund revenue. The primary property tax is set by, or it's limited or constrained by state law. It can grow by 2% per year, plus an amount related to putting new properties on the roll. So that's why you see a steady growth here. There's, it can't grow by more than a certain amount, so it looks very different than the others. You do see the one year where there's a dip, and that was a legislative change that reset the maximum allowable levy, and so that's the only reason that there's a dip in that particular year. And then this is the last of the 10-year history charts, and again, you see a very different pattern in this particular revenue stream. This is the development-related revenues, which includes our plans review, building permits, and inspection fees. And if you drew a line from the top of '05's bar down to the top of the '14 bar, you'd see about a little bit more than a 4% per year decline in this particular revenue. '14 is about $7.4 million lower than the '06 peak, or, excuse me, $7.4 million lower than the '06 peak. So this particular revenue stream has still not recovered from the recession that we've gone through, and it is one of the more volatile ones, and it's ones that, it's one that we are very conservative in preparing estimates for as a result. So this chart depicts our forecast. It's very basic. The first bar is this year's budget. We've left it a different color to let you know that it's the budget. Currently, our revenues are tracking very close to the budgeted level, so there's no reason at this point in time for us to change that budget number. Then what we've done is, we've forecasted essentially, sales tax at just under 5% per year, and then state shared income and sales tax at 5% per year. And that's somewhat consistent with some of the forecasts we have from other agencies or entities about how retail sales and personal income may grow during this period. And then you'll notice a little purple bar on the top of '17. We did take the risk of assuming for this forecast that we would be going forward with the mid-decade census, based on some of the data that's been provided by others, we're estimating right now that that would be a $2.7 million impact in '17. So that's the first year we would be eligible to receive an increased proportion of the state's shared revenues as a result of the census. So current estimate's 2.7 for FY '17, and I will let...
And I guess you used that projection in the 2018?
Yes, and we project, we grow 5% on top of that from there. So we assume that that will continue in the projection, correct, Mayor? So that gives us kind of an annual growth rate of 5.6% from the year '15 through year So that's just a real quick look at the general fund projection. I told you, I talked to you about the construction sales tax separate from the general fund. Construction sales tax historical chart looks a lot like that development-related revenues one you've seen. This is a revenue that historically, there has been a rate increase here that has impacted the, this revenue stream. There is, you know, this, this revenue has also been treated as a one-time revenue, so that it's been used to pay for capital projects and capital outlay, things that are, are not recurring. Now, the forecast for the construction sales tax, I'm showing it in two pieces on the bar. And that's because there has been a change in state law that became effective on August 1 of this year, which states that if you have a, a construction sales tax rate that is higher than your basic rate on your other categories, that increment that's above your basic rate must be allocated to the impact fee program. So that lighter color bar on the top is the portion of the construction sales tax that would be allocated to be used in the impact fee program, or it's the 1% of, of the 3% increment that is going to be dedicated to that program. Then the breast of the bar represents the 2.5% that would continue to be used as one-time revenues for capital projects and other one-time activities. It's important to note that the impact fee program is still one-time, like projects, so it's not changing the character of how we're using these funds. It's just that state law requires them to be dedicated to this other purpose. So they will no longer, the, the 1% increment will no longer be accounted for in the general fund in the future. For this forecast, we have projected '16 at a lower level, and that's based on experience and knowledge of people about how our construction sales tax revenue might change with the end of the 303 I-10 project. And then after that, we're assuming 5% per year growth. Now, we'll move into the enterprise funds. This represents the water forecast. Essentially, in this case, this is the one case where we've changed the budgeted revenue number for '15, and that's because a rate increase was approved for the water fund after we had developed the budget. And so this estimate now reflects the addition, the impact of that rate increase starting in January 1, and then we build off of that as we move forward in the forecast. The forecast has kind of two key assumptions about how revenue might grow. The first assumption is about how account or usage growth might change over time, and we did that based on looking at historical account growth or usage growth. So the bottom bar, the dark blue bar, represents residential users, and we assumed about a 4% per year growth in activity there. The yellow bar represents commer, or, excuse me, irrigation, and we assumed about a 1% growth there. The green bar represents commercial. We assumed about a 1% there. And then the little bar at the top is industrial, and we did not assume any account growth in that particular category. Once we built in those levels of growth and usage, we then applied a 5% per year rate increase effective in January 1 of each year. That rate increase is there simply to be a placeholder to note that it's likely rate increases will be needed each year. But at this point in time, since we're only doing a revenue forecast, we don't have the expenditures that are necessary for us to match up expenditures with revenues, and it.
Repeat that one more time for the public.
Okay. This, this, the, this forecast does assume a rate increase annually, but that rate increase will be dependent on the expenditure estimates to serve the water services customers. And as we forecast those expenditures, we'll come back and talk about matching up a revenue forecast with an expenditure forecast. And I believe that the water, you know, have, have appointed a water planning committee that is looking at the water and wastewater areas, and their work will be involved in moving forward and developing what types of rate increases might be necessary.
And just for the public, that committee is made up of citizens of Goodyear?
Yes, Mayor. It is citizens.
Thank you.
This is the wastewater forecast. And so like the general fund, we start with budget for the current year revenue. There was no change in the wastewater revenue rates. And we do the same thing in terms of assuming growth first in the number of accounts or the usage. And in this case, the blue bar is residential, the yellow bar is commercial, and then the other bar is other. And so the growth rates were the same as they are for the water categories. It's basically the same group of customers. And again, in the wa, in the wastewater fund, we did the same thing, and we included a placeholder rate increase of 5% per year, starting in January 1 of '16. And again, that will just be, that will be dependent on subsequent review of expenditures, forecasting those expenditures, and then matching up revenue needs with those expenditures.
When we do that in both of those cases, when we say placeholder, that is not a goal to meet, the 5%. It's just covers what might happen. Is that, I mean, so, I, I just want to, again, get that across to the public, because when we do these things, they go, oh, here go 5, 5, 5, 5. That's where we're going. We do not know that at this time.
Mayor, you're correct. We have, we don't have the data to know what that rate increase would be at this point in time. We essentially chose 5% because it was essentially the basic forecast and the general fund forecast for how those costs might be growing, or how those revenues would be growing. So it was just a choice. It is not based in any analysis. It's just to say, it is likely that rate increases will be needed annually, but we do not know the level of those increases.
Thank you.
The last of the forecast, this is a pretty exciting chart, big blue bars. That's basically because in the sanitation program, nearly every ounce of the revenue comes from the user fees. So what we've done here is we've assumed 4% per year account growth, which is based on our historical experience. We have not assumed a rate increase in the sanitation fund. It is not, we don't have a reason to believe a rate increase would be needed each of the five years of the forecast, so we have not put one in. However, we may need to, we may be exploring the need for a rate increase sometime in the five-year period, but we didn't want to go out on a limb and further assume a particular year that that might have to happen. And if, if there's no more questions about the, the forecast piece, I can go on to the calendar.
Let me check.
Well, we, yeah, just, maybe the calendar's a good part to, for a question. Yeah, I was reading, I guess, in the paper the other day about, I guess, the courts meeting with the state right now to go over what they owe for the schools, and they're going back and forth. They're claiming they can't afford to pay. The schools are saying, you owe, who knows where that's going to come down to. But also reading, they could have up to about a half a billion dollar. Is that about right, Larry? Shortfall next year and next year's budget, they're projecting. Yeah, it's higher than that, half a billion plus. So I guess my question is, as we go through there, and we get to the point where we start plugging in our costs, and we start plugging in, you know, base budgets for the departments, we got some variables out there that we don't know what's going to happen, because if the state's looking at a half a billion-plus shortfall, the question is, where are they going to get it? They've already taken a lot of stuff off the table that they say. So I'm, you know, I always wonder, are they going to be looking at us? And if so, what are the timelines that you may see some of those bills hitting the legislature, so we can get at least a general idea, kind of what they're up to, and what maybe some of that impact may be, you know, on us? And I suspect it's going to be earlier than April when we get into the base budget presentations. I don't know if they'll have anything formalized by that, but that's kind of a concern of mine going forward, because that's a big number. The court says they owe it to the schools, so they've got to take care of that. So where do they find their money? I guess it's a 64,000 or so question. So just a thought process of how, I guess, we're going to keep on track, or let us, or, or keep us informed into the loop on all those different bills that are going down there in the legislature that would impact us, and what are some of those possibilities that, that may come about. More of a comment than a question, because you don't know what that answer is right now, anyway.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, you're right. We don't know what happened, history, but, you know, historical experience says sometimes the state is very late in making its decisions, so it will make preparing our budget much more complicated this year. And we will certainly be monitoring that and keep you informed as we go forward through the steps of the budget process, to let you know, where are we with the state? Is there any certainty forming or not?
Okay, thank you.
In terms of the budget process for the FY '16 calendar, or pro, preparing the FY ' '16 budget, this is kind of laying out of the calendar that we plan on following. We're here with you now on this basic revenue forecast. In February, and we're going to follow essentially the same process that was done last year with a few little changes. And the first change is that in February, we'll come to you with a five-year forecast, and at that point, we hope to have better expenditure information to, to build into these. But the other thing we'll do in February is we will take, bring you a kind of an initial look at some of the CIP projects that are being considered for inclusion in the draft 10-year CIP. So you'll have an opportunity to provide some input on how we're developing the CIP before we come to you with that first draft look at the 10-year CIP in March. In April, we'll be spending a lot of time together, as I believe you did last year. We'll be keeping your Mondays and maybe a Tuesday a little busy. We'll do the, you know, we did two days of department-based budget presentations last year. That would probably be April 6 and 7 this year. We did a revenue update then the next week, and then we did an expenditure update with supplementals and some more information on the CIP the week after that. And we held a budget forum last year in April as well. Then, as we get closer to actually having to do the steps of legally adopting the budget, the dates become more firm so that we can meet the state's required calendar. So on May 4, we intend to come to you with a draft budget proposal and a work session. And if needed, we'll come back the next week to discuss that further. On May 18, we'll ask that you tentatively adopt the budget. And then on June 22, we'll ask you to do the final adoption step. And then on July 6, will be the property tax levy. That's.
So basically, the schedule's put out that if citizens had questions on the budget, we have given them plenty enough time to come before council and ask questions and get the information they need before we go on to the next portion. Thank you.
And that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions, Council? Joe?
Just one general, it's probably, you can probably answer that. That 5% max on the assessed valuation growth, is that this next budget year when that takes effect? I'm hearing a shaking from Larry?
Yes.
Yes? Okay.
Yes.
All right. So, so in essence, the assessed valuation will be capped 5% for both primary and secondary. And they should be the same number now, I believe, won't they? Okay.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, that still won't change our maximum allowable primary levy, but it will change the mix of the prop, of the rate to achieve that.
It's, yeah. Yeah, and I agree with that. I'm, I'm never a rate person, anyway. Everybody on here knows that. I prefer to focus on the levy, because that's what you're really paying. But again, what it will do is affect eventually the rate with that assessed value being capped at 5% growth, so.
And, and I just said that, I might not have heard, Larry. When do we get the new property tax amounts out? Sooner?
Mayor, councilmember, we get the new property tax levies in February, or the new, excuse me, assessed valuations in February.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
All right, that was a very good presentation. We appreciate.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I'm now going to adjourn this meeting. And just again, to remind you that we have to start the next meeting right at 6 o'clock because of the public hearing. Meeting adjourned.